7:03, adjustments to the agenda. I have, I guess, two, 7.2, a point of V hydroproxie and that's a conjunction with the SBA. And we have currently executive session for negotiations. Do we need to go into executive session negotiations separate from the building and the Cessu? If you desire.
No.
But we have a lead, so we're going to substitute the negotiations for executive session for Leo. Any other adjustments? All right, 3.0, Joe didn't come. 4.0 presentations, 4.1 facilities committee. Taking away Mark.
Oh, yeah. So, as you all know, for the past year and a half, couple of years, there's been a committee, a subcommittee looking at the structural and maintenance of our school. And what we're going to look at tonight is recommendations and some costs. And also some of the problems that we have. You'll have to excuse me, we do not have a room for us. So, the agenda, go through the charge, include the summary, future maintenance, review of some options.
I can sit there. Yeah, just. Show me what, what do I?
This.
All right.
Kristen, let me do that. I've seen this PowerPoint a few times, so this is new information here.
Sorry.
We can't afford a clicker, because none of the budget.
So, the charge, which I won't read, read further, but it was handed out with the slides. And the next slide. The charge going on, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. A couple of things we're looking at here. Conditions that affect compensating, conditions of deterioration of existing buildings on the property. These are probably the most important things we're looking at. Wrapping that to code violations and what that may mean for some costs. And we'll see that in the next one. So, the 1939 building is the old town hall. And these are, just a summary of some of the big points that we found, that were found to be wanting. And partly, it's dealing with cafeteria size, condition, age. The mechanical and plumbing upgrades that are recommended throughout the building. The 1939 building is a well-used wood-framed building. It's been around a long time, and it's time to look at doing something about bringing in other things. In fact, part of the recommendations is all mechanical, all electrical, and then doing some efficiency upgrades. Excellent. Going through again, again, some more thermal improvements. One of the things that was looked at as we're going through the process is the efficiency of the building, where it was needed to upgrade insulation, that sort of thing, to make everything work a little more efficiently. Roofs were a big issue, as you will see, this is recommending a full roof replacement on this one. Next slide. The 1969 building, this is sort of the first floor hallway classrooms. And here, we're talking about replacing windows, upgrading some HVAC equipment, replacing electrical. Electrical, you'll see, is a common theme throughout the buildings, as well as some more efficient electrical use and switching. Excellent. The 87 building, mainly, we're talking about the NPR building here. It's, again, thermal insulation, upgrading some HVAC, adding some exhaust tanks to make everything vent just a little bit better in that building. The 1996 building, this particular slide is dealing with part of the school that is the art classrooms, the second floor. Here, we're recommending replacement of the art roof. Also, in the 1996 summary, is replacement of the gym roof. These two roofs are coming to the end of their useful lives. I know that the roof, at least over the art rooms leaks already, when we get out of here. Again, some HVAC improvements and upgrading some heating systems on the second floor to make them work more efficiently. Next slide, please. Further, on the health and safety, talking about fire alarm control system. We'll talk a little bit more about this because that's a big item. The Quonset hut, which is something that we talked about last. Building-wide sprinklers, and these kind of go together. The cost for those two items together is somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 million. The reason these are on here is that the type of work we're talking about in upgrading and renovating the building may trigger the necessity, the fire marshal may require us to, that's what it boils down to. We can maybe talk about that a little bit more.
How much was that? I'm sorry, 1.5 million?
I will do a focus. And also, one thing we added in here was a backup generator to allow the school to operate more efficiently as possibly an emergency shelter for the town. The numbers are too big to deal with in a yearly budget. We're going to talk about that a little bit on the next slide. When you see the numbers, you'll, I'm not just going to say. The biggest problems we identified are with the 1939 building, and they represent a large portion of what would be considered a burden for such a job. What you're seeing here is a full list of recommended, yes. Of recommended improvements, replacements, upgrades. To follow this list will cost $5,808,000. And that's just leaving everything as it is. The 1939 building would still exist, it would just be repaired up to these standards. Yeah, I think I need to reiterate that we couldn't do that without school, but. Two things that we did not look at and are not included in your numbers. There's a water line replacement from the well, which has had problems. The boiler is coming, we're told, to a point in time where it's ending the near of, near end of useful life. Air handlers in the 96 building, same thing.
Do you want questions as you go along after you?
You can shoot, go ahead, shoot questions, and remain with us in the 1969 building.
The information about the boiler being at the end of its useful life, are you having problems with it?
No, not at the moment. That's just something we didn't look at. Yes.
And the source of the qualification that is at the end, near the end of its useful life?
It's just a sort of warranty issue, like.
And does the manufacturer say that, or?
I think, I think it's, Dave, it may, it's perhaps give you a specific answer, but.
And I think he said before that boilers typically have whatever, 40-year life or whatever, and that. I've heard him say that in previous meetings, that it's running great, but you anticipate that after however many years, you're going to have to replace.
Ironically, maybe two weeks ago, we had a chamber fail in one of the boilers. That was a need for repair. So, it just occurs in the interim.
So, the committee looked at a couple of options for doing a little more than just what's listed. In this plan, what would happen is the 1939 building would be taken down. And replaced with a new kitchen, cafeteria, and library on this side of the building. With a new layout, a new landscape, with a drop-off point behind the building. When looking at options, we looked at a gut renovation of the 39 building, tearing it down, and as you'll see, tearing it down and putting it in place. This particular option, cost-wise, and in interruption in school daily activity, would be the most profitable going forward. Kevin, next slide.
Sure.
And this, this is a little more close-up of where the cafeteria and the library would go. On that side. Let's see, let's take a look at the other plan as well. The second plan we looked at would be to replace the library cafeteria in place, where it is now. Tearing it down, rebuilding. Bigger cafeteria, little toddler cafeteria, some new light, floors aligned, if you go with this going down. One of the issues with even gut renovation, or doing it this way, is where to feed children for the 18 to 24 months, construction would be going on, and what to do about the library at that time as well. That is not a problem, so. So, these are the cost estimates for those two plans. Construction estimate for overall project cost. This is rebuilding in place. This is the rebuilding on the other side of the building. Those are big numbers. The 1939 building is not going to last forever.
And so, before we run, is this, these numbers are just for that? It doesn't incorporate all the other changes?
No, this is definitely. So, this would be a replacement of the 1939 building and all capital, all the other capital improvements listed here. Same here.
Source of the estimates.
Two people have been, Lee and Ron.
Did you estimate?
That was kind of quick, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion on this going forward. But as the committee, we wanted to bring an update to the board to see where we are. And I'm not concluding, but I'd really like to thank Greg, the senior, all of the others who participated. This represents a lot of their work, I've been with you guys for four or five years, and they did some outstanding, in-depth research.
What's next here, what do you?
What do I think? Well. This being what we came up with as a recommendation, it's obviously, it would have to be a bond, it would have to be put up. But we have to discuss time. Is this something that needs to get done this year, in the next couple of years?
The various parts and pieces that are in this estimate in the different buildings.
Yes.
I think you addressed this, but you'll just have to review yourself. If you live with yourselves, if we live with ourselves, to just dealing with the 39 building.
Yep.
What happens to all of these numbers?
To these numbers, they drop by, give me a round figure, $3 million?
And that's still with replacing the 39 building out of the building?
Yes.
What does the term abate mean used here?
Abate means, in a contained scenario, remove any asbestos-containing materials.
So, to abate and dispose of it once, you would first have to deal with the asbestos and then tear it down.
Asbestos and let it hang, and then pull it out, yeah.
Do the permitting to do that work? I mean, it's mixed, so what?
Yeah, I don't think the permitting is that significant of an issue to take it down.
Yep.
It's been an ongoing discussion, I thought you remembered, the project.
Well, I wonder, what's the next step? I mean, as you said, it's a huge number, we're probably spitting our budget, but, you know, we have a responsibility for the health and safety of our kids and giving them a good learning environment. You know, what do we do? Last time, it seemed like there was, we were able to borrow money at really no cost. If we're borrowing money at cost, that only further makes it so hard of the school.
Yeah, and again, I mean, part of this number is the assumption that they're going to, that the fire marshal will make us sprinkle the building and replace the entire fire system, which is a, that's a large, a large portion of the money.
How are we now, because I know there are quite a few fire alarms triggered at the school. A lot, well, I guess, a false alarm, has that provoked any kind of response from the authorities in terms of?
As far as I know, no. I know when they built the new wing, that they did get around the sprinkler by building a firewall between the 69 and the 77 building and the new wing. But this would be one more step. And it's a guess on everybody's part, but I think the feeling is that we're doing enough here, whether we do this or just.
The conversations with the state at the time we did the last project, where it was a self-contained project. We created a two-hour fire separation between the existing building and that addition. So, everything was contained. There wasn't our fingers reaching out to the rest of the building so much. And that's what causes them to get interest in the rest of the project, is as soon as we start pouring renovations into the remaining part of the building, they're going to say, now you've got to bring all of this stuff up to code. You do the area calculations of the building versus what the fire perimeter access is around the building, and that's what triggers you to have. And the problem is, is you don't have adequate water pressure, so you need a fire pump and the storage capacity to be able to charge the system. And that's really where the bulk of the money comes from.
They don't have any sort of periodic review? So, if we never renovated or did anything, they'd never come ask us about it?
With codes, you get grandfathered, so your grandfather under the code until you take that next step and invest more money in the building.
When you use terms like health and safety and education and efficiency, there's a range.
Sure.
Viability of those comments. Certainly, on one hand, you're talking about leaking roof, you're beginning to have demonstrable effect on some of those things. The rest of it's more conjectural. So, when I asked you, what was next? At this point, does the committee consider it's worth finished, or do you have more meetings on the line, or?
We probably need to go forward, but as far as gathering information, that part of it is done to this point. It'll be updated, but.
So, is your, are you, is the suggestion that we are now going to discuss this as board and consider the options and come up with a number for a bond?
Or however we decide to handle it.
And?
And I, I, you know, back in, when we had our roundtable in May or June, I think we were discussing, you know, what would happen if a bond came up, would we want to do it this year or next year, or would we be looking over options? I think there was some pushback to the idea of doing it this year.
So, Kristen, as chair, have you seen, do you envision beginning to incorporate this discussion at regular board meetings? Are there any special reviews for this purpose, or how would you approach this?
Good question. I mean, I guess we'd put it on as a discussion matter. And I guess, I don't know, I guess I'd look to Elaine, if, is it feasible for us to be putting this in now, or is it wiser to wait until after we're done with this budget?
If you're asking, do you have time in the agendas?
Yeah.
Well, before you have time, so you have one more regular meeting before you get into the two times a month budget cycle in November. So, you could have it as a discussion item in November and decide how you want to look forward with this. Is it special meetings? Is it, you know, part of the agenda for the rest of the year, starting again in February? You know, that's a board decision.
Okay.
And I think having the discussion amongst the board members makes sense.
So, what do, what do, what do people think about the timing of the discussions on this report? Is that something we want to do sooner rather than later?
Did the committee have a recommendation in terms of, you know, the urgency and what the timing would need to look like?
I think the committee could come up with a timetable, or put it this way. Urgent repairs, as in, you know, a roof that leaks needs some attention. But no, that was, that was not.
And I guess, I, when I, when I think about it, you know, if we have some urgent things, such as the roof, such as, you know, that calculates into our operations and maintenance budget, so maybe a preliminary discussion of this in November to think. Is this something where you've been thinking we can possibly work on in the next year or two or not? That might have an impact on how we look at the O and M budget.
The piece around the roof is, from what I understand from my conversations with Dave, is that some of the roof issues are beyond repair. They've been repaired multiple times. In some cases, it's a kind of like a rubber bicycle tire material that gets a tear, and you patch it, and then it stretches in another spot and patches, and then water collects and stretches it and tears it. So, we've got multiple areas of the building that have that kind of roof. And then we have other parts of the classroom area upstairs that need replacement. It's not, and that can't be sustained by the O and M budget. Maybe the O and M budget could be, you know, slap a more glue on the tear kind of thing, but, you know, $5,000, $10,000 is at a clip to get you. But those wouldn't be fixing, those would be band-aiding.
It's the issue of strategy. If you're going to replace the whole building, then you just need to put band-aids on the roof until it's terrible. In other words, if the board were to decide a bond for some amount of money to replace buildings, that would be one thing. On the other hand, if the board looks at these numbers, as a lot of year-end numbers might, and say, are we delusional? And just say, we need to start talking about repairing and replacing roofs, then that's a different conversation. So, I think, I, the first thing we have to do is have a larger discussion. Let's see if it's the role of the majority, a majority of this board to attempt to bond for replacing the 39 building and the other things that we've discussed. But that's the thing you've got to decide first.
So, I just, just as a point of reference, so the 1996 building, roof replacement on the north side of the 96 building assumes insulation replacement at 25% of the roof area is budgeted at $180,000.
Well, we can go, we.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, as a, you know, so we have context.
And if we're thinking.
The point is, there are a lot of such numbers.
Yes.
In here, and the thing that the board, I think, should do is first decide what strategy is. We're going to aim toward replacing things and doing this whole thing, or we might just say, no, replace some roofs and so on.
So, if, if that's what we're thinking, then we should put it on for a discussion at the next meeting. After, I encourage people to review this, review the slides from tonight, and I encourage you to go walk around the building. Take your list with you and take a look, just because some of it is obvious to them.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Just talking about sort of the more comprehensive stuff. Regardless of what the fire marshal might or not say, just in our own judgment, as it relates to safety and some objectives, sort of, you know, judgment, that we even think it makes sense to live the way it is. Fire safety-wise.
The sprinkling in the entire building? So. I have strong feelings about this, because I do really dislike sprinkling, but they're a positive. The building as it is has survived many years without sprinkling. The most dangerous building without sprinkling is it, is the 1939 building, it's a wood frame. The rest of the building is a concrete structure with firewalls and whatever. So. It is something we should look at. It is a safety issue, but it is expensive to exchange. It would require much construction, it would be disruptive to the entire school. And again, the cost was at $1.5 million. If we're going to do this, if we're, if, in our strategic session, we decide that we're going to look for, for some serious construction, then yeah, it's worth doing at that time. We may be forced to, we may not, but even if we're not, I think we should look at it.
And would it be easy for, I don't know who has this, Greg or Bob, to forward us the, sort of that O and M breakdown plan?
A breakdown plan?
Yeah, because it shows a lot of unfunded stuff that we haven't band-aided, and maybe if we compare that to here, it might better inform our discussion in November?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, that would be a good idea to have a sense of, over the life of this investment, what it's costing us and also what we're saving when we're not having a, presumably, your repair bill goes down a lot, you know, with the new facilities, so. And the one thing, Kristen, I need to mention to you, or I have to, if it gets to the point of a bond issue, I can't really be involved in that from the professional conference. So, anything regarding strategies.
That's really lucky for you. Just kidding, thank you. So, do we have any, thank you so much for Ronnie and Lee for being here. Does anyone want to throw a couple of questions at that?
We've got professionals in the room, if you have any questions that kind of pop in your head, or I can't tell you the amount of work that.
Are they available for discussion with this? Is that a?
Would you be available for discussion next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
For the record.
Yes.
A discussion like this should take place in show up. And should be warned, or at least have the public notified specifically that that's what we're going to be talking about, in my opinion. I have one other question for you. Your gut regarding the loss of grandfather protections for our various systems? How far can we go with some of this stuff before, in your opinion, will trigger that kind of thing?
I think for the most part, if you're doing kind of cosmetic repairs, in other words, if you're going to fix the roof, I think that's going to be fine. I think once you start getting a little bit more invasive and, you know, you start attacking that 39 building, opening up walls to pull out the electrical and all of that thing, I think, no, that's when the bells are going to go off on code triggers. Some of it is that, some of it's completely up to the fire marshal's discretion, right? They're the jurisdiction having authority, you know? And then some of it's black and white, the code, even when you get to a dollar threshold. So they all just need to be conversations. And as you say, it's strategic planning. How do you guys want to look at the bigger picture? Because you start pecking away at the little things, you know, the whole slippery slope. And you might want to say, I want to wrap my hands around a smaller number. But then you've got to evaluate that smaller number and say, if I just do this isolated piece of work, is that going to have any effect down the road on follow-on work? And if that's a strategy you want to do, I would suggest sitting down with the fire marshal and say, this is what we're thinking about doing. What's your take on this? Just so everybody goes in eyes wide open. You get it on the record saying, if you do this much work, you're going to have to do this, 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 or nothing. And I think that's the best way to approach it.
Thank you, Kristen. You should at least make sure we put a fire marshal through our conversation.
Who's the fire marshal? It's not local, right?
He's a district fire marshal.
Yeah. Lee and Ronnie, you've talked a little bit about logistics involved in the locations of various pieces of this. I wonder if you'd be willing to say a couple of words about that in terms of impact to the building when you, when you're working in certain areas? I, I think, again, and as we talked about, as a community, this whole complex of additions and renovations that have happened over the years. You know, and the focus last time was, you know, what's the worst-case scenario that we had? And that was the 1949 building which got replaced. Next on that list of everything we talked about was the 1939 building. And what that houses for a program is really the tricky thing. Because that has kitchen and cafeteria. It can't be done over a summer renovation. So whatever effort gets put into that, you need to be thinking about, what are we going to be doing with staff and students during the school year? It has an impact that spreads around. And there's a cost associated with that. There's an inconvenience associated with that. So those things need to be reviewed. Again, if you're looking at the piecemeal approach, and we went through all of this exercise before, is if, what is the plan that you want to do? And then you have to focus in on, if that's it, what are all the repercussions of it? There's certainly some invasive work that needs to be done in the 39 building, even on the code-trigger stuff, as soon as you start picking away at it. And once you do that, then you have to deal with, how are we going to keep the staff and the students functioning and have a school year assembled somewhere? Where are we going to put them? And that really hasn't been figured out if you're going to renovate everything in place. And some time will need to be spent on that.
So the numbers that you had last time around, there were ancillary costs that were around the issue. You're talking about what we're going to do with faculty and staff and people and whatnot, all those stuffs going on. There are no such numbers in these? These are just the construction costs?
Well, it depends on which is the option. The option where you're leaving everything in place, you can build new additions to support the library and the kitchen. Everybody's going to use the old stuff. Those ancillary costs aren't there. The impact happens when you start doing the piecemeal renovation stuff. And no, those costs of, you know, phasing, we call it, have not been baked into the project cost. Because we don't know what those options are. It depends on how far you go on the list.
So just listening to this conversation and hearing all of the different factors, some members of the board who want to have a special meeting on this as opposed to having, you know, half an hour or half in this board meeting where you're also looking at. That's another option, to just have a singularly focused, come, be prepared, have read the report, have done, kind of walked through yourself, and, you know, then go through all of the pieces. Because it's single, it is complex and a lot here.
Two things. It should be a special meeting, but it really does not make a lot of sense to tell the individual board members to go walk through the building with their list. It should be something that's organized with, at least David and possibly me. So we get it straight from the horse's mouth as we're looking at it. Because nobody hears the construction expert that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lee and Ronnie. Before they leave, do we want to, what is, do, what do people feel about Elaine's idea that we have this as separate from our regular meeting?
Could it even be, if we had a public meeting with this topic, could the board members come in half hour early and have a walk-through? You know, if they were to be at everything?
That would have to be part of the meeting itself, the walk-through? Because if there's three or more of us together, it has to, right?
Yes.
Will you like an executive session walk-through?
I think you could just push, make sure that the agenda's already clear. But this portion of the agenda is going to be the board walking through. I mean, it's unlikely that other people won't join. And that, that's not really an executive session item.
But technically, it would have to be something that a town, a community member could walk along if they wanted.
Yes, that would be a problem, right?
That happened the last time, too. We took people on tour through the 49 building and through the rest. People got to see stuff.
It should probably help the discussion.
Right. So I don't know how we coordinate that date. Is that something that we need Dave to attend, or?
Yes.
Yes.
So does it make sense?
Who's there, committee members?
Sample Lee's team.
From the public. Bob, Greg.
Anyone else who'd be with the good idea.
So do we want to try to tentatively schedule something? It's convenient for me and Ronnie and the people here, and then if we have to change. So what are people thinking? Did try to do it later this month before we get into the extra meetings in November? And I don't know what the schedule is for. I know Dora had meetings Monday, Tuesday for negotiations.
Right, so the negotiations meeting is starting on the 22nd of October and the second to the 26th of the month.
So she'll have a meeting on the 22nd and the 29th?
Right. So I don't know if we want to try to squeeze in, into this on the 16th or?
What day of the week is that?
Next one's Monday.
A Tuesday or a Thursday would be.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It's very replicative, I think.
Well, at the moment, how about like November 5th?
And what day of the week is this?
This Tuesday.
Works for me.
A particular time of day?
Do you want to do it at our old time of 6:30 or what? I, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, so let's warn her.
What do you guys think? What works for you?
I live in town, so it's fine. Whatever works, I can do that. And the 5th is a good day.
Okay. Do you want to do 6 or 6:30? Do you want to do the walk-through at 6 or the walk-through at 6:30?
6 is fine.
Is that right?
I should just check with Dave.
Okay, so let's do it tentatively for, what did we just say?
6 and 5.
Okay. First one, all right. All right, thank you so much. And we'll see you on the 5th. And thank you, Mark. 11:05, it's 6 o'clock.
Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Ronnie.
Will you follow up with Dave?
I'm going to do that. I have a meeting in the morning.
Okay, great, thank you. So if for some reason that doesn't work for Dave,
Thanks, Ronnie.
Greg can let me know and we'll try to figure out some other time. All right, moving on. 5.0 reports to the board. 5.1 principals report.
Are there any questions for us?
We keep, you've been a new judge on studio means?
It means math studio?
But that means like a class or?
Right, so we have all the teachers. For example, K to 2 was yesterday, so there were all the student teachers who support K to 2. So the classroom teachers take K to 2, the math coordinator, right?
And we got the, the issue that we had, the grievance around, straightened up?
Yes, yes.
That actually wasn't related to the studio work. That was related to the course, which is, happens before the studio work.
Any other question or comments on the principals report? And Jeff? CSSU debrief. And I guess for Clyde and Mark, the one thing that they wanted us to get back to, it's a CSSU board decision about whether or not to fold the para, para educators who are associated with special ed into central office or teach them at the building level. Their recommendation is to leave them in the building. It's easier, it makes it easier to have a para be part-time special ed, part-time regular ed, or part-time whatever. So their recommendation is to not fold that into CSSU. So we'll, I guess we'll be voting on that at the next meeting. I don't know if anyone necessarily wants them to be in, but.
I can't envision what you would do with the other one.
Right, well, the law requires that your spec, special educator says of July 1, are CSSU employees. But they allow you to keep the paras in the building. Okay, so we will.
Um, we're just from that.
Yeah, you're, Kristen. So. Yes.
So apparently at the V S V A regional meeting, one of your board members was recognized for dedication and exemplary service to Vermont Shelburne as a board member for 22 years. It's Clyde. You weren't there, received this wonderful award, so I said I would give it to you.
Congratulations. Very nice. And what Elaine also mentioned at the CSSU meeting, and I think everyone heard, is that Charlotte received a letter, go ahead.
A letter from the Secretary of Education commending Charlotte as a school of continuous improvement for being 50 to 20 points above the state average in reading and literacy and, kudos to you.
Thank you. All right, 6.0 discussion matters, SU purchase services. And I guess we're just discussing if we want any changes in the services that we purchase through the SU. So the core services, we are part of the purchase services that we get through the CSSU are information tech, CY programs, food service, transportation, CIS, which is the early childhood stuff.
We do not do transportation, right?
Oh, tr, yeah, we do not do transportation. Sorry, I'm just going through the CSSU. Psych services, occupational therapy. Physical therapy should be on that list, too.
Does it say OT teaching?
No, but that's, we know that. Uh, English Language Services and Early Learning Partnership. These are all things that we, well, they're not all things that we need to provide. Some of these things we need to provide. And if we didn't do it through this supervisory union, we would have to go out on our own and purchase them. There's other things that we can opt out of if we want to. So is there any desire to change? This has been the purchase services sort of menu that we've had for a long time. Is there a desire to have any changes to that?
Make my usual stipulation that I think we should be going with food service in-house. But that's not going to happen.
And I think we have a, the food service committee adores our rep on it. And I thought, I think we're supposed to be hearing soon their recommendations. But your opinion is noted. I don't know if anyone else wants to try to pull food service. Right now Elizabeth is a CSSU employee and the rest of the cafeteria staff are building employees. Any other? Uh, 6.2, Part II After-School Model.
So Kristen, I'm going to go get Jeff O'Hara, who is the director of the Part II programs for the entire, for Heinsberg, Shelburne, and Williston.
Okay, great.
To come do that with you. You can go on to the next item, he'll be here.
Okay. All right, 6.3, Budget Form Preparation. And so in the past, we have done a few different ways, right? We've done sort of informal things where we've put up this, the paper, and asked the community to break out into little groups. More recently, we've just sort of.
Asked Joe what he thought.
Asked Joe what he thought, yeah. So sort of, this is what we've done last year. This is, you know, how we expect things to go. I don't know. You know, Lynn has had the slideshow that I'm sure we can continue to modify as the years go by. Do people have a preference? Does anyone want to try something new? Does anyone want to be in charge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, how many people?
There were actually, there were a few people, but.
Yeah.
No, it's later, sort of, they won't come until later in the process.
Probably.
If they come and help.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to go back to 6.2.
I thought you'd use Jeff O'Hara, who is co-principal at Hinesburg Community School, and is also a top two director for all of our after, our Part II programs in Williston, Heinsberg, and Shelburne.
Thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely. Do you mind if I sit?
No.
So would you like me to give an overview of Part II and how it came to be, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it takes a little bit of background for myself. Moved up to Vermont, tried to find a job. It was harder than I expected. And so I worked as a para in Richmond. And to make enough money, I worked in an after-school program in Richmond, the YMCA LiveWire Program. That put me in a position where, that following summer, the executive vice, or executive president, or vice president of the YMCA, Sullock, asked me if I would be interested in running Camp Greylock, their biggest day camp that summer. So I, I decided to take a chance and do that. I taught for a year. And in that time where I taught, she became Assistant Superintendent of South Burlington Schools. She came back to me after my first four months teaching and she said, do you have any interest in creating an after-school program for our district? I said, no way. This is what I've always been meant to do. I was a teacher. And then she showed me how much she could pay me, and I said, okay. So I went to South Burlington and created Schools Out. That was the name of their program. Set up an after-school program in Chamberlain, Marquette Central, and Orchard Elementary Schools. And it was a program that was previously run by the YMCA. And for reasons that I think that I understand why, but the program did really well. The, the numbers, the enrollment went up. The parents were psyched to have their kids in a, in a safe, fun place after school. So through that, through the five years, or four years that I was with Schools Out, South, the superintendent said, you know, I think you should go and try to get your administrative endorsement. So I went to school for that. I applied for a job at South Burlington High School and the state denied my license because I didn't have three years teaching. So at that point, I had to make a decision. And South Burlington had a sixth grade opening, so I taught sixth grade. Decided that I loved teaching. I had no, not a strong interest to be an administrator like I did before. And then Bob Goodrow, who was with me in Richmond when I was there, called me up and he said he had an opening. And one of the, one of the big pieces, when I came to Heinsberg, he said, you know, we're going to ask you to create an after-school program in Heinsberg. And one of the, one of the big pieces when I came to Heinsberg, he said, you know, we're gonna ask you to create an after-school program in Heinsberg. Came in, it was a YMCA program, once again, I felt like I was the, you know, the big bad guy against the YMCA. It was just doing what people had asked me to do, so I went in, um, their program, when I got there, it was at about twenty-five. At the end of the first year, it was at about forty-five, and currently we're at seventy. Uh, this is two, two years and two months, and, um, the, as, as the program began to do well, parents began to speak highly of the program. And, uh, very soon after, parents in neighboring districts heard about the program and wondered, why aren't we doing something similar? So Williston was the first one to contact me. I talked to Walter six or seven months into, uh, the first year, and, um, and just had conversations about what it would look like and, um, possibilities, and they decided, um, that it wasn't the right time. So they went back to the YMCA, had a conversation, asked the YMCA to do a couple of different things. The YMCA, um, did what they could with their capacity, and, um, had the same sort of conversations with Shelburne, uh, in September, October of last year. And they became pretty enthusiastic about, uh, signing on, and at that point, I had staffing that allowed me to begin to put people in leadership roles. So I took the director from Heinsberg, and I, I told Shelburne, I said, if you're wanting to jump on, I can move the director from Heinsberg over into the Shelburne position, which I did. That program had about fifty kids, so, so Shelburne signed on, uh, for this year. That program had about fifty kids, uh, last year with the YMCA-run program, and Lorian, the director, already has the program up to eighty kids now, uh, within a month and a half. Williston, um, came to me and said, all right, we're in for this year. Williston Central was eighteen, nineteen kids a day, uh, it's at forty-five right now. And Allen Brook was about fifty as well, and there, um, we've capped their program at seventy because it's such a small school and space became an issue. So in every program, um, numbers go up, I feel like, um, I, I work very closely with the administrative team. Williston's program looks very different than Shelburne's program, and both programs look a little bit different than Heinsberg's program. It's really based on school need. Williston wants a little bit more of an academic focus, Shelburne wants, uh, choices for their students, uh, more of an enrichment type of setting. My core beliefs and philosophy is that after-school time should be primarily focused on fun and making sure kids get out and play, uh, and are exposed to different types of activities. But with that being said, I, I work with the administrative team to create a program that works for their school. So. It's kind of a, I don't know, maybe a long synopsis.
So how does that differ from the YMCA program? I mean, it must a lot because you're, what you're doing makes people happy.
Um, I always, I always believe whether it's school or after-school or any profession, it's the people that work in the program. And I think hiring is the number one piece that makes the difference. I think even, even with the four schools now, uh, in part two, we're still small enough that it has that really personal touch. So if a parent does have a question, it's not out of character for me to give them a call. And at the YMCA, they, they, they're, they're a great, but big organization. And anytime that you have a direct question, you might have to go through the director of the program, and then the, the person at childcare, and then if you, if you really want to go up there, it might take you a lot longer to get there, but it's really, um, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't believe it's rocket science, but what I expect out of my staff and the staff trainings that we do to put that personalized touch, that they should know every kid by name, and they should know every parent by name, and when you walk through the door, you should be greeted and made to feel like you, you know, you're connected to the program. If you walk in any of our programs, we have pictures up and, um, you know, get to know you types of activities with the parents. We do parent nights where, um, especially during the holiday season, we'll stay open till eight-thirty at night, nine o'clock at night, so that the parents can do shopping. And just little things like that make a world of difference. But I would be the first one to tell you, I'm not doing anything special. It's, it's really just a, an overall philosophy, the YMCA, it's, it's where I learned after-school, it's where I learned, uh, this, this fun-based camp type of experience. They also have that philosophy, and they also, um, are community-focused. I think, I think the biggest difference is the people that, uh, we hired, were able to pay a little bit more of a competitive wage. And, um, and all of, all of the money that's collective goes back into the program, and that's a huge piece. Either the program or the school, I should say.
When we discussed this on the phone, you had reservations about whether our population in Charlotte was big enough to support this.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. Heinsberg and Charlotte are about the same size, um, I know that we're a little bit bigger now. An ideal number for an after-school program is forty-five to fifty. The reason being is the state licensing regulations ask us to keep, uh, ratios at about one to thirteen. I keep our sites at about one to ten. When you have thirty-five or forty, um, and you have four people, I always like to have the director kind of be able to greet all the parents, make sure everything is happening that needs to happen, and when you have only four people in, in a program like Heinsberg did for a while, for, for paid positions, uh, it doesn't allow you the flexibility to offer a lot of choices. So if there's a couple of people in the gym, and there's one person doing arts and crafts, and there's somebody doing a science experiment, when the parents walk in the door, it's hard to have that personal touch, and I think that's a key component. Having said that, uh, I'm not sure what your numbers, I haven't spoke to Greg or Audrey about what their, what your current numbers are. When I looked at Williston Central and I saw that they had eighteen, just only based on the size of the school, I knew that even if we started out at twenty-five, we would be at sixty at the end of the year. My reservation with Charlotte is that I can't, I wouldn't be able to give you that assurance because of the size of the school. I think, um, the, the one thing that we have going for us right now is, is positive parental feelings about the program. And I think that even, even being in a school that doesn't have part two, I think that, um, parents, you know, without ever stepping foot in Williston and Shelburne, numbers went up dramatically. I don't know what that would mean for Charlotte, I, I really don't, and, um, could I run a program of thirty kids? Yeah. Would, would the, would the end result financially be, um, might be a break-even? So, you know, the other piece too is that, as an administrative team along with the board, uh, you would have to, um, there'd be so many conversations about, um, I could run an amazing program if, uh, if every dollar went back into the program. So it depends if you would like, uh, facility rental fee, or if you would like to, uh, if you'd like me to kind of cut corners in some places. But I could run a program of thirty kids and have it staffed by four or five people and still have it be a phenomenal program. Just the end financial gain wouldn't be as much as, um, it could be if there was forty or fifty or sixty kids.
Well, is it, what's the cost to parents compared to the YMCA?
It's, uh, it's purposefully less. It's seventy-nine dollars for a five-day-a-week program, and then it incrementally goes down as the, um, the days of the week. You can do a two, three, four, or five-day program. We offer, uh, vacation camps. Almost all vacations, we don't do Thanksgiving or the day after, um, even during the Christmas break, where they're, I don't know, I feel like a, a big bad employer, but I think, I can't remember if we're there Christmas Eve, but I know we're there the day after Christmas. But, but parents, there's a lot of working parents that need the care, so we, I work with the, the staff, and the bigger the staff, the more flexibility I have. Uh, something else popped in my head when you were asking about the cost. Oh, um, they're all state licensed sites, so anybody who, uh, would qualify for state assistance would get subsidy. And, uh, state subsidy is sixty-nine dollars a week, and, uh, in, in all the cases, parents that apply for subsidy and they get fully reimbursed by the state, we waive the extra ten-dollar cost. If, uh, if a parent is in need and they apply through the state and they don't qualify, we'll, uh, knock it down in most cases at least fifty percent. The, the place that you could learn a lot of information about the program is the, the website, it's parttwokids.com, and the number two is, what? Two is the number two. But it's, uh, it's, it's, it's an opportunity, I mean, that's, that's the way that you need to look at it, and, uh, and Greg and Audrey and I, uh, we all communicate on a regular basis anyways, so if needed, that, that wouldn't be a, an obstacle.
If approved, would the new calendar have any bearing on your program?
Yeah, I, I was, I was really excited about the new calendar, and I, I don't know where it's gonna, I know that they're deferring for another year.
Yeah.
I think that could.
Yeah, it was mentioned at the CSSU meeting.
Yeah. For the program, it would be phenomenal, um, because that's, uh, that's one of the big pushes, uh, well, um, parents would almost not be forced, um, there would be a, a higher need for their students to be somewhere. And we could provide some amazing opportunities for the, the kids during those intercessions. But I think it's a little bit down the road from my take.
And it's just school year right now, it's not a summertime?
It's a summer.
Oh, it's summer.
Yeah, well, uh, so let me qualify that, um, uh, Heinsberg and Shelburne run summer programs, and that, that's the other piece I should mention is that, um, I really do work with, uh, whatever the community and the school needs. So in Williston, they have a fantastic rec program, uh, that has established summer programs. And I'm not, um, I always feel like the bad guy with the YMCA, I'm not doing this to hurt the Y or any, like, it's just what's best for kids in the opinion of other people, not myself. But, uh, so with the, with the Williston rec department, I don't touch any of their summer programs because, uh, the Williston administrators are really happy with the, the, the summer offerings, so I'm cognizant of that, where in Shelburne, uh, the YMCA had a summer program, so we're gonna just, um, expand on, on what they had in place. And in Heinsberg, we started a summer program, uh, after the first year of programming, and it, and it went really well.
Okay. Any other?
Are you from Wisconsin or Minnesota?
See, everybody says that, I, I have zero Midwest in me, and it's, it's the way I say the As, right?
I'm a New Yorker.
I'm, yeah, I'm central New York.
Oh, man.
Yeah. Born and bred, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, that's the budget forum preparation. I mean.
Before we get onto the actual budget, the walkthrough and the discussion about, are you gonna follow through with putting something in the news about that?
Yes. And I know that, yeah, we've missed the last two board corners, I think Adora, that first deadline just kind of got by her, and then I think she felt like, yeah, the second one just didn't work out either, so I don't know if she's thinking about, um, doing a negotiations one, I'll follow up with her after, um, tonight. But yeah, I'll make sure that either the board corner or that Brett, um, will put something in about that meeting, yeah.
Just to clarify for Dave, is the, um, the walkthrough also meant for the public or just the discussion afterwards?
I think it has to be open to the public because of public meeting laws.
Okay. So it could be a bunch of people.
It could be, and I know the last one was, will you guys hear that?
No.
No, and I know, yeah, I kind of remember trailing, I don't think I was on the board, I kind of remember trailing along a huge group, so he seemed very unphased. All right, budget forum preparation, so does anyone have an opinion about what we want to do for the, that? We've warned it as, um, prior to the budget meeting. Do we want to just do the slideshow, do we want to just be soliciting people's ideas about priorities or numbers?
Do you still have Lynn's slideshow, or somebody has it? I would update that as needed and do that, I just, that strikes me as the more, um, professional way to initiate a conversation.
Okay. All right, I'll work on.
But that's just me, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on modifying the slides and.
I was gonna say the exact same thing, and, and if there's really not gonna be all that many people there, then let's go with what we have and know, and, uh, and go that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no information in that budget anyhow, so, you know, what are you gonna do?
All right, well, I'll work on that, I'll send out a draft of it in advance, hopefully. All right. So communication, six point four, communications board corner, um, so I'll find out from Adora about that negotiations part and make sure that the news gets something in about, a special meeting, after we make sure that it's the date we think it's going to be. All right, moving on, seven point O, action matters. Seven point one, approval of the S B A conference attendees, do I have a motion to approve? Clyde's attendance at the con, or that we're gonna pay for Clyde's attendance at the conference, do I have a motion to?
Those two different things, so moved.
You know, historically, um, we've paid for whoever wants to go, it's not like I'm going, you guys have to stay home.
Right, anyone can go who wants to go, right. But we just thought it's, it's some, a couple of years ago, that it is an expenditure, and we should just kind of perform a, so, probably no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we received at the CSSU meeting, there's a VHI proxy, which is the Vermont Education Health Initiative. So, um, each school gets a vote, and I, I don't think it's a big thing, I think they have a panel of people that they're electing to this, but, um, we're supposed to give someone the proxy to vote on our behalf. So do I have a motion to appoint Clyde as our proxy for VHI?
So moved, second.
Is anybody else going?
Adora might be, um, yeah, I can't, Adora might, Adora went to part of it last year, correct? You don't want to be the proxy?
No, I'm happy to do it, but if somebody else wanted to, that's.
Yeah, I imagine Adora would probably be there for one or both days, but I'm not positive. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, I'll figure out how to fill that out in a minute. Eight point O, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I think we have to sign, pass this down. All right, are there any directors' comments?
It might come back when you guys go ahead.
I got nothing. I have no comments.
I know what it is, once again, for the record, negotiations should. Once again, for the record, negotiations should be in public, and it doesn't sound like they're going to be once again. So I'm compelled to use Einstein's observation about the insanity of expecting different results from the same activities.
Yeah, I think probably a lot of us would like them to be open up. All right, we'll confirm next meeting dates. Calendar 2.0, meeting is tomorrow at 6:30 in the cafeteria here at CBU. The next CSSU and Charlotte meetings are November 13th. And in addition, we have our hopefully meeting on November 5th at 6 o'clock for a walkthrough and a discussion of the presentation from the Facilities Committee. Are there any other... All right, do I have a motion to go into executive session for legal?
So moved. Second.